Good afternoon. My name is Charles McGlaughorn and I'm Acting Chair of the Pitt County Planning Board this evening. Our Chairman had a funeral out of state that he is attending, and our Vice Chairman had business in Raleigh. So I was informed that since I'm the senior-most member, I don't think that refers to my age, I think it refers to how long I've been on the Board. But anyway, then I would be the Chairman for this meeting. And at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to ask the Secretary to call the roll, please.
Lisa Ellison.
Here.
Thompson Forbes.
Present.
Sharon Gray.
Here.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
Steve Little.
Here.
Charles McGlaughorn.
Here.
Michael White.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman, we received notice that Fred Austin, Michael Best, Rita Jackson-Gilbert, and Minnie Johnson-Stewart will not be present tonight.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Our next order of business is our prayer, and I'd like to call on Thompson Forbes, if he would lay us some prayer.
Gracious and loving God, we gather here today with open hearts and open minds to take care of the community that we live in. We thank you for the opportunity to serve and the trust placed in us to shape and be part of our county's future. Give us the wisdom and clarity in the decisions and the discussions we have tonight that work to reflect the commitment and the values we have for our communities and our neighbors. Bless each person here tonight with insight and peace. We ask for your guidance as we conduct tonight's business, in your name we pray, amen.
And Michael, would you lay us some prayers of allegiance?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next order of business is to consider the minutes from the July 16th meeting of the Planning Board, and the Chairman entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So voted.
So a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the minutes are approved. The next order of business is public addresses to the Board, and we have a procedure for receiving public addresses to the Board, and this is not for anything that is to be considered later. In other words, we have an action item that is to be considered, and we generally don't entertain that information in public addresses, but rather other information. And in a few minutes, we'll be calling for an item that is on the agenda, so if, you know, I have a list of names of people who signed up, you know, to speak, I assume on the agenda item, is that right? Did all of you sign? That's okay, okay. Well, are there any items, anybody wants to speak, otherwise, other than to the agenda item? And we will hear from everybody who's signed up, but if anybody has any general business about the Planning Board, let them come forward now, otherwise, we'll go on to the next item. We have, it's time for reappointments. Jonas, do you want to tell us about that?
Yes, so, next item on your agenda is the reappointments to the Planning Board. We had two members that were reappointed by the Board of County Commissioners at their October 6 meeting. That was Steve Little, representing District 2. He was reappointed for a three-year term, as well as Thompson Forbes, representing District 6, was reappointed by the Commissioners for a three-year term. So, thank you two for agreeing to serve on this Board again for an additional three years. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, and I might say, on behalf of the other members of the Board, both of them do a tremendous job. I've served with both of them, and they do a tremendous job on this Board, and we're glad to have you. Thank you, thank you for your service. Okay, now, do you want to go on to the next item?
Sure. So the next item on your agenda is the elections of officers and appointment of Executive Secretary. Every October, the Planning Board is charged with electing a new Chair and Vice Chair, as well as the Executive Secretary. In addition to the Chair and Vice Chair, it's typically that the Planning Director serves as the Executive Secretary to the Board. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn that back over to you.
And the floor is now open for nominations for Chair of the Planning Board. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman.
Is there a discussion?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Thompson Forbes.
Okay, Mr. Forbes, you've been nominated.
Please the nomination be closed.
Okay, there's been a motion to nominations be closed. All in favor of the nominations being closed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Steve Little as Vice Chair.
Okay. Do we, should we change now?
No, go ahead with the Vice Chair, and then we can take a pause.
So let's, okay, the floor is now open for nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Steve Little.
Okay, Steve Little has been nominated for Vice Chair. Any other nominations? Is there a motion to nominations be closed?
Move to close nominations.
All in favor of the motion to close nominations?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All in favor of Mr. Little, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay.
And the last step would be the Executive Secretary.
Okay, and the tradition, the Executive Secretary, you know, since I've been here, has been the Planning Director, and we're lucky to have him, by the way, so let's don't get somebody else. So, are there any nominations for the Office of Executive Secretary?
I nominate Jonas, he's done a good job, and I think you'll do a good job with little.
Thank you, thank you. Any other nominations for that?
Move nomination cease.
Okay, all in favor of the nominations being closed, is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of electing Jonas Hill as our Planning Director, as Executive Secretary to the Board, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
And now, at this time, we can pause to reseat everyone based off of those elections.
Okay.
We back at it? Okay, we'll get back going, starting with Ben.
Sir, good evening, new Chairman, congratulations, and as well as Mr. Little. We do have one rezoning request this evening. It was submitted by Mr. Bobby Tripp, and the request is to rezone 85.35 acres of property currently owned by Pitt and Beaufort County Farms LLC. This is parcel number 66309, and it's located on the southern side of Ram's Horn Road, just west of its intersection with Witcher Cherry Lane Road, and the request is to go from rural agricultural to rural agricultural conditional district to operate a sand mine. A location on the vicinity map just showing you where approximately this location is. You see it's just north of US 264 East, east of the, east of City of Greenville's jurisdiction, and again, it's just on Ram's Horn Road, south of Ram's Horn Road, where it kind of connects just west of Witcher Cherry Lane Road. Some site pictures from the area. This is the actual site, looking at it from Ram's Horn Road, and this is an adjacent property directly to the east. The driveway, we'll get into that in a minute, would be just to the right of this picture here. This is looking east towards Ram's Horn Road, or excuse me, towards, or down Ram's Horn Road, and then this is looking back west down Ram's Horn Road. Some pictures of some adjacent agricultural uses directly across from the site on Ram's Horn Road, as well as some residences along Ram's Horn Road, pretty close to the subject property. There is an existing sand mine, which I'll get to in just a minute, kind of at the intersection of Ram's Horn Road and US 264 East. The picture's shown there, as well as the commercial use on US 264 East, and I'll show you where that is in just a second. So the existing land uses in the area, you see the subject properties outlined in the black there. That property just to the southeast of it, the gray is the existing sand mine I just showed, as well as that red kind of flag-shaped lot, kind of towards the bottom of the map, is that existing commercial off of US 264. Otherwise, the area is generally agricultural and vacant ag land, as well as some residential you see there in orange. The Envision Pitt County 2045 Future Land Use Map does designate this area as rural residential, and this designation applies to transitional areas that include a mix of low-density suburban development and agricultural lands. New development should have relatively large lots or be clustered away from sensitive areas and/or working agricultural operations. Typically, these areas which include existing single-family homes, low-density subdivisions, and surrounding agricultural lands. The uses include low-density residential, agricultural, agribusiness, some isolated non-residential uses along major roads or near key intersections, and utility access is onsite septic systems with community water service, and public sewer may be available in limited areas. Utility access, again, generally less than one to two dwelling units per acre. The existing zoning, you see there, is all zoned RA, rural agricultural. There is some RR to the east of the property on the eastern side of Ram's Horn Road, as well as some commercial along the highway there to the south. Again, the proposed zoning is RA, so the existing zoning is rural agricultural. The proposed zoning is rural agricultural conditional district, and the RA zoning district is intended to accommodate a very low-density residential uses, as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agricultural-related industrial uses, which are interspersed throughout areas that are principally characterized as rural in nature. This district does reflect the diverse nature of land uses within predominantly rural areas, and therefore permits a wide array of land uses. Again, a conditional district does allow for rezoning for a specific use, which, again, this evening, the proposed use is a sand mine. So from Section 8 DDD of the Pitt County Zoning Ordinance, there are some development standards at play here. So there's a minimum of 100-foot use separation from the edge of any pit to the permit boundary of the mine. Hours of operation when blasting is involved, blasting is not proposed for this site, so that won't apply. There are screening requirements, and they must also obtain a valid state-issued mining permit. So the sketch plan we received from the applicant, you see there Ram's Horns to the north, and I've highlighted the rezoning there in that red hatch line, so it is the entire property that is proposed for rezoning this evening. The excavation area, the applicant's proposal to mine out about 25 acres of the 85 total acre site. The proposed six-foot berm, so like I said, there is screening required, and the ordinance does allow a berm that is six foot in height around the excavation area, and that is what's shown on the sketch plan we received. I do want to make clear, this is just a sketch. This process involves only a sketch plan at this level. If it is approved, a professional site plan prepared by an engineer would have to be submitted to our office, so this is just a sketch plan of the proposed use. The proposed haul road and driveway going to Ram's Horn, the applicant is proposing to pave the first 200 feet off of Ram's Horn Road, and then there is an existing cemetery onsite, a small family cemetery that you see highlighted there. Pitt County Planning Staff does find that this request is consistent with the Envision Pitt County 2045 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as rural residential on the future land use map, and the uses in the area are predominantly agricultural with limited residential land uses. Land Use Policy LU4 in the plan does recommend specific site and/or operational standards for uses such as sand mines, including additional separation requirements or buffering from existing development, which I just discussed. And Planning Staff does find that this request is reasonable and in the public interest because there is very limited residential development directly adjacent to the proposed sand mine, and because there's an active existing sand mine in the area. Additionally, the proposed mine will be screened and buffered from nearby residential properties. So Staff does recommend approval with the following additional conditions. No zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan prepared in accordance with Appendix B of the zoning ordinance is submitted to Pitt County Planning for review and approval. The site plan shall include any proposed stockpiling of material or equipment. Screening shall be provided in accordance with the requirements of Section 10H. However, if a berm is determined to be an adequate alternative screening method, as provided for in Section 10H, the minimum height of the berm shall be six feet. A 10-foot easement shall be provided to allow access to the existing cemetery onsite. They will be required to submit an erosion control plan to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. An operating permit is required by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality's Energy, Mineral, and Land Resources Division prior to any work onsite. A 500, or excuse me, a 50-foot repair and buffer is required on all stream features present on the site unless proper documentation is obtained from the North Carolina Division of Water Quality or the Pitt County Planning Department showing that the feature is considered exempt from the Tarpan Buffer Regulations. They must obtain a commercial driveway permit from NCDOT and comply with all requirements for access to the subject property. And finally, the applicant has proposed hours and days of operation from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Friday, and those are not requirements, that last one for the days of operation from our zoning ordinance, but the applicant has proposed those hours based off some feedback he's received, and he has agreed to all the other conditions that have been presented. So the public comments will now be entertained by the Planning Board. The Planning Board will then make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and the Commissioners are currently scheduled to hold a public hearing on November 17. And before I turn over to you, Mr. Chairman, for Planning Board, or for public comments, Staff did meet with the applicant and several nearby neighbors at the site on Monday. We've done that in the past to kind of address any concerns and kind of see the site. I'm not going to say everybody walked away holding hands or anything like that as far as difference of opinion with the sand mine and whether or not they supported or not, but Staff does feel like that was worthwhile and appreciates both the applicant and some of the neighbors meeting us out there, you know, during the week. We've had that in the past where we feel like some of these conversations can at least alleviate some, even though maybe not all concern. So I did want to bring that to the Board, that both sides kind of met out there, and Staff certainly appreciates it. So with that, I'll turn over to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that, we'll open the floor for public comments. I will call your name, and when I call your name, please come to the microphone, state your name and your address before you talk, and you'll have three minutes to speak. First, Ms. Lisa Lucas.
Hello, my name is Lisa Adams-Lucas. I'm at 106 Trent Circle, Greenville, North Carolina. We do have family and property, where you all are talking about the rezoning, Bobby Tripp is, and my concern is today is the health issue. If you got a sand mine there, people with health issues, it's not going to be good for them to breathe in those toxins. Secondly, I'm worrying about my family members that are already there. They are not on city water, they're on a, what is it, well? With doing all this digging, it can decrease their land as far as not having the actual foundation that they need. Secondly, from what I've read and what I understand, Bobby Tripp already have enough sand mill, so that's neither here or there for me. The blasting, we got to worry about the residents that are there. Nobody want to hear that, I don't care if it's seven to six in the afternoon, nobody want to hear blasting where they stay at. People want peace at their home, not a bunch of noise. I live by the airport, and trust me, it can be a headache, all those planes coming by, so I can imagine blasting all day. Lastly, but not least, you're not talking about actually having a driveway coming to Pactolus Highway, you want to go on Ram Horn Road. Why you want to interrupt these people where they staying? And is Bobby Tripp planning on actually paying these people for that little strip of land just to drive through their yard? Because he gonna have to do that because there's no driveway there. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Kelvin Creach.
I'm approximately a half a mile from the proposed site, and I have three concerns. My first concern is the traffic that will be on the Ram's Horn Road. We just now got our road redone, and I'm very concerned about all the dump trucks becoming by my house and the other residents from 7:30 to 5 o'clock in the afternoon. My second concern is the water table. I have 180 feet deep well. I'm concerned with all the current mines in the area. Sooner or later, the water table will drop. And my third concern is the property value. I just found out this afternoon that this was a proposed sand mine. I saw the rezoning request, but I had no idea it was for a sand mine. So tonight, I'd like to ask the Board respectfully deny the request for a sand mine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Betty Ward.
Hello, my name is Betty Ward, and we got cemetery back there, family back there. So I agree with my cousin, I think Bobby Tripp already got enough stuff.
Can you state your address for me?
2172 Ram's Horn Road, right beside where y'all talking about doing that mess at. Okay, so like I said, that I think that Bobby Tripp already got enough stuff, and I stay right there, and I don't want to hear all that noise. I works every day, got small kids, so I don't want to hear all that noise, so that's all I got to say. And I think, I hope they deny.
Thank you. Johnny Ward.
My name Johnny Ward, 2172 Ram's Horn Road, and all that noise out here, that noise all through the morning, night, dump truck like dough slamming, and another thing too about that graveyard, I wouldn't feel great when that graveyard since it been back there, the people dead and gone, why they want to do away with the graveyard and dead people? I understand that, they want to build something, they want to do something, they need to build or go around the graveyard, leave the graveyard there, and so bad about it, they did, did away with one path, all 264, and all the way go to the graveyard, it through Ram Horn Road, right down the road. So I guess they want to fly helicopter up top and bury somebody back there again or something, you know, lift it up in the air, so you need a, near way of getting around there to the graveyard, because we always go down there cleaning graveyard after, so they did away with the path that ran back there to the graveyard. That all I got to say.
Thank you. Ann Broly.
Good evening, I'm Ann Broly. I live on 5170 US Highway 264. I'm tired of sand mines. There are eight sand mines within the Pactolus community, eight. Three of them are within a mile of my home. I have well water, wonderful well water, but within the 264 area, there is no water accessible to us except our wells. And if something were to happen to our groundwater, we can't hook on to Stokes or to Greenville, major concern. We also farm for a living, along with our son. We exceptionally worried about groundwater depletion for us to be able to produce our agricultural crops. Those are two of our main concerns, and they affect our neighbors too, all right? We, with eight sand mines in the Pactolus area, and three within my home, I have talked with Mark Durway, he is a hydrogeologist. His position is with the Division of Water Resources with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. I've had multiple conversations with this gentleman and learned more than I ever wanted to about aqua and water and sand mines, but he and I in our conversation said, "The science proves that pumping sand has a direct effect on groundwater flow. It can cause a regional decline in the water table and adjacent properties. We farm on a piece of property right across from that. We want to be able to grow our crops. We don't want to have to worry about the water table. We deal enough with other adversities as well as climate change." Mr. Durway also said that with this many mines, with eight within that kind of short confine, he said, it would, he suggested that an impact study be performed by another hydrogeologist to see what kind of impact these and future mines would have in this area. We're talking about Pactolus. We don't want to be forgotten. We want to know, yes, there may be land use that the county has produced, but we want somebody, a hydrogeologist, to tell us whether we are in good shape or not in good shape with any future mines. He suggests a study to be done, and also possibly no more permits be permitted until this study is done. And this is from a professional hydrogeologist that is employed by the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality. I ask that the Board consider this request and not issue any more permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Lillian Ward.
My name is Lillian Ward, I live on 2166 Ram's Horn Road, and I went and researched the graveyard back there. My family have been back there ever since I was a child. I am 67 years old, and that graveyard have been back there ever since I ever known it. I've never known no other grave. My father's last request was to let him lay back there where he can look at his back door, and I stays in the house that I was born in, and I feel like we don't need no sand mine back there. We was fine the way we was. We like where we live at, and we don't need nobody coming back there disturbing us all through the night. I used to go to work and I had to get up early. Now that I retire, I want to be able to enjoy it. I don't want to live later and listen to big trucks coming in and out, and all these big machines moving. I want to have peace, so let us just have peace and stay where we are. Please do not give him that permit.
Thank you. Diane Bell.
Good evening, my name is Diane Ward Bell, and I currently live in Greenville, but when I want to go and rest and have the peace and quietness, I also reside at 2166 Ram's Horn Road, where there's gardening, fresh vegetables there. My grandparents are in that graveyard, and I wish that it will not be disturbed, and I'm asking for that permit to be denied. That's all I have to say.
I apologize, last name Singler.
Good evening, my name is Prem Singler, I own parcel 2365.
Good evening, uh, my name is Prem Singla, I own parcel two-three-six-five. I am just finishing up an investment of three million dollars putting a commercial warehouse and office complex. By putting the, approving this mine, which is on the backyard of my property, with all those unsightly mounds, all the traffic, all the big huge equipment and all the, then on the, on two sixty-four, my property is on two sixty-four also, how much traffic? Right now, there were hundreds of trucks going there from this existing mines. Now you're gonna add about another hundreds of them there, it's gonna be a big mess. And my property, three million dollars I just invested into it, that is at risk. If you approve this from there, I will not be able to lease the property. I will not be able to develop, do further development for, to enhance the area. So when I bought my property, since then, four years ago after I start building, developing the warehouse, the property in the area has gone up by about two or three times. Why? Because there is some good business person is there doing some development and everybody thinks that there is a good future. But if you put a sand mine, first my property value goes way down. I'm not even sure if I will be able to sell it or even lease to anybody. Second thing is, it doesn't do no good. And I have a one hundred acre of land. And if this, uh, this is a landmine is approved, oh, sorry, sandmine is approved, I will be coming forward to the same board right here, I'm gonna open up another sand mine. Will you be approving that one at that time if you approve this one? That's my question. I don't want to get into a situation that you approve this one now and then when I come with my application, then you will say, oh, there are too many sand mines in the area, we cannot approve yours. So for this reason, we got eight, Mr. Brody said that there are eight sand mines in this area, within the vicinity of a few, uh, few miles. We don't need any more sand mines. Sand mines should be in a remote areas where it doesn't affect people's lives. And people live and then sand mines could be do their business. And when they're done, that that's fine. But here, the people living around it. I don't know why the, this planning board, they said they, uh, didn't, they recommend approval of this one. I'd like to see all those things, why was, what did they go through to say that one? I want them, those people to be living near the sandmine where this approval is, then tell me that, uh, yes, we approve it. It's the people who are living there, they are the one who are affected. Somebody should have come and talked to these people, they, everybody, that hey, they're building a sand mine, what do you think and all that?
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I ran over.
Thank you, sir. Jay Cox.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I previously served on the Pitt County Planning Board and I understand, uh, that sometimes the decisions you make are not that easy. When the county authorizes the approval of a project, it also has a duty to disapprove when it does not meet proper standards or in this case, does not serve the best interest of citizens. The request before us raises a lot of concerns, including the impact on our water quality, our potential lowering of the water table. This affects all of our lives out there. We don't have Greenville Utilities water, we don't have that option. Stokes water stops at Davenport Store down the road. I respectfully ask the board to exercise its full authority and deny the request until proper protections and monitoring and compliance with measures are approved and the proper safeguards are there to assure our water quality. I'd like again to thank you for letting me speak. I seriously, um, would like for you to deny the request for the new mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Trip.
Good afternoon, everyone. I've heard tonight a lot of, uh, um, talk about whales and, and traffic and so on and so forth. And, uh, so some of these things I would like to address to the board and say, uh, all these things are looked at by the state. None of this will become forward and all of you know, none of it can come to pass without a permit from North Carolina, as far as a mining permit in place. An engineer will be involved to do all this legwork prior to applying. This is only a request for a zone change and this is the first step, as you all know, to get there. The blasting has been brought up, we'll do no blasting. The whales have been a, a, a subject tonight. The, this sand mine will not exceed twenty foot deep. We have test dug it, we've checked it, and all whales will be of course deeper than twenty foot deep. No de-watering will take place on this sand mine. So we will not discharge water that is in the ground off of this site. All water will stay on site, so we can't figure a way that we would bother anybody's whale without pumping water from the site. The cemetery that's been brought up to grave sites. This, if you look at our map, all this is addressed and it is to, uh, stay in place and continue in the same spot without disturbance with access to it in the long-term plan. We, uh, we feel that this site is a good site for future plan. And, and I know we're not here to rezone it for what our future plan is, but this is a, uh, plan for a ten acre site, home sites broke up, this farm being broke up in ten acre sites. Once this sand mine is being excavated out, this is not just a proposed sand mine. This is a proposed ten acre tracks to be separated for people to put home sites on. And, uh, we have some maps that we will share in just a little bit, of course, that shows a future plan for it, for the ten acres. And so when we started this project, we did not come into it with a mindset of just sand mine. We come into it with a mindset of a sand mine and creating a ten acre track home site on, for eight different sites. And we know, of course, they have to be ten acres plus. So we're asking the board to consider all this and, and thinking, hey, this is another opportunity for not, uh, not clustered homes. This land, this land is already zoned where we could use thirty thousand square foot lots on it as it's zoned. But we're not asking for that. We're asking to use it as a ten acre track as far as small farms. So we would please ask the board to, uh, consider it strongly thinking in the outcome of what it means to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Trip.
Hello, my name is Sandy Trip and I live at fifty-one thirty U.S., two sixty-four east. And my main concern is the quality of my water. I have a sand mine to the left of me, to the right of me, behind me, then it's gonna be one up there. I love my well water and I don't want to have to worry about the sand and it going dry. And I have some rental property that's across from the sand mine on Ramshorn and two sixty-four that I found out that the well has gone dry, so now I've got to ask them to leave. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. William Ward.
William Ward, two sixty-eight Blake Street, Washington, North Carolina. I can remember back in the day when I was small, that cemetery back there, it ain't no bigger than a matchbox now. Because then took all the land, put in the cemetery, plant crops on it. And I can remember that. But he come up digging some sand. He ought to go dig something back there out, he want some sand though. You know? It been, that cemetery been there ever since I can remember. And now you come up digging some sand? You go dig in your backyard, man. We don't, we don't need that, man. You want, you must want to kill some people. Is that what you gonna do? You dig, go dig in your house, you know? You know, we been, look, that's like that cemetery. I can remember, Rob Pitts gave, gave my, uh, gave us that, that lot, that cemetery lot. I'm not lying, I used to go back there and clean it all. I didn't want to go back there. I used to be so lazy, my dad said, boy, come on back there, you going to clean that cemetery? I go on back there and cut them broads and all that there. And that, like I said, that cemetery ain't big as a matchbox now. Got them took so much man from the cemetery. Need to get the man go out there and survey it. Cause it's in, it's in a, what you call? To tell you how big that, that, that plot was, that plot, it's, before my aunt ever died, she told my mom, it was three plots back there. And right now, I can't see three plots back there, cemetery. Cause we's a big war cemetery, uh, big war, we's a big family. And Rob Pitts gave, gave us that plot before he ever lived here. So I hope y'all deny him. He want to dig some sand, let him dig it in his backyard.
That's the last name I had for public address. Any others? With that, I'll close the comment period for the public address and take comments from the board.
And I will mention, y'all should have had a couple of sheets where we did receive a couple of written comments as well, um, at your table this evening.
Questions from the board?
Chairman. I have a question about the proximity of the existing dwellings. How, I saw the pictures, but how close are?
So this is our existing land use map. You see this little cluster of residential right up front, I believe several of the wards live up there. There's also residential here. Those are the ones kind of directly adjacent as well as the, um, property there to the south of it. Otherwise agricultural, but you see all the orange there is residential. That kind of shows the ones that are directly adjacent to the site.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but during his presentation, he said that there were gonna be a ten acre home site. Where is that gonna be? How close is that proximity gonna be to the site area?
So what Mr. Trip is proposing, that if this is approved, they would excavate the site and use the sand for development projects. Once that's done and the state mining permit is released and they clean up the site, he would then come in on this site that we're looking at this evening and do ten acre tracks and build residences kind of around, um, the pond. And other than that, I can let Mr. Trip speak to it, but that is staff's understanding. We do have that preliminary, again, this would be after, um, the sand mine's done. So that's kind of what he's proposing on site, again, it's separate from this request this evening. But his long-term plan, as we understand it, is to come back and basically remove the rezoning as the conditional district for the sand mine and release it back to the current zoning that it is now, so that they could then develop it for residential uses, ten acre tracks. Um, as opposed to, like he said, currently the already zoned district allows thirty thousand acre tracks. Their proposal would be for ten acre tracks. Again, that's what has been presented to staff.
Okay, my last question is, um, Ms. Brody mentioned an impact study, anything done by our staff to find out environmentally?
So, um, we met with Ms. Brody last week, um, y'all heard about some concerns with wells this evening. We asked our, um, environmental health director Kent Keeter. He met with us for about thirty minutes as part of that meeting and kind of explained how the wells work. It was very educational for me. Kent's takeaway, and again, Ms. Brody spoke to someone with the state who has their comments as well. But Kent's takeaway, without guaranteeing that it wouldn't affect the wells, that it would be very minimal. And again, I don't want to speak for Kent and I don't want to question other sources out there, cause I'm sure there's plenty of them. That's what we were told of staff. Kent deals in permits these wells and based off of, um, the depth that these wells usually go to, his concern with this sand mine affecting it was close to zero. And as Mr. Trip said, the, the water's not being taken offsite or pumped into a creek or anything like that, so the water's staying on site. So I don't pretend to be an expert in that. That's what I learned from talking with Mr. Keeter and what we've done with our own research. That's kind of staff's, what I learned from that. Again, don't claim to be an expert and don't want to question any other comments that other people have presented tonight with that specific question.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. As I have heard each one of the folks mentioning their comments and now here too, that even from a Monday night meeting and from conversations along the way, it sounds like the well water, the water table items have been addressed. Maybe not always to our likings, but not as difficult as we may think sometimes. The cemetery, I heard that addressed just a few minutes ago too, for, is having access to the cemetery and to make sure that it would not be moved, anything there would be moved, okay? Hours of operation and there again, the fact of no blasting makes everything fall in line with the criteria that our staff has to work with in approving this, uh, project. So as we go forward, to let you know also that if this project now is approved by this board, we'll be making that as a recommendation to the Pitt County Commissioners. We don't have the final say, so just be prepared. If it is approved, that you're gonna have to be coming back and making those same comments again, okay? To the county commissioners. So just be aware. But it sounds like, uh, Mr. Trip has tried to make some at least information available to everyone. Again, we don't always like what we, what we hear. And I'm probably a good subject of that right now, okay? But it does happen that way. So, um, Mr. Chairman, I'll yield at this minute.
Yes, sir. Can you press your button, please, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, do we have a standing requirement in our ordinance for a certain distance in the form of a buffer to be between, between a sand mine and a residential house?
We do not. So in this situation, it's a private, uh, family cemetery. If it was more of a large, like, um, the pine wood on the eastern side of Greenville, if it was an actually, I call corporate cemetery where folks are buying plots, there would be regulations on that. In this situation, I mean, we deal with them probably once or twice a quarter. Somebody wants to bury a loved one on their property. We don't regulate that, you know? They have to speak with environmental health to make sure for septic and well purposes that there is. They, they have state rules for that. And my understanding with the state mining permit, they have rules for the distance away from the cemetery that they'd have to be. And I believe that's why the sketch plan shows that little cutout kind of around it to meet that. Fifty or a hundred? Fifty feet from a cemetery. You see it kind of cut out around that to adhere to that. And again, that's a state requirement during that state mining permit process, they would verify that.
But look, and I know that everybody who was within five hundred feet got notice of this meeting. However, um, it appears that a lot of people live within, say, a thousand feet of this. And a sand mine is different from a lot of other passive uses in terms of how far the effects, the noise and the, and the sand itself, how far they travel. Anyway, it just concerns me that it appears just from the line drawings, I don't have, I, I don't have a, you know, a map that I can really look at and tell, but it, it appears from the line drawings that there are a fair number of people living within a pretty close proximity to this. And, and correct me if I'm wrong.
And I put back up that existing land use map showing that, so hopefully that gives a pretty good visual of the current residential versus other uses, um, in the general area.
Right. But all of those, all of those orange, uh, sections are, are how, are where people live, right?
Correct, those are residentially used properties, yes, sir.
Well, all I'm saying is, I'm considering the noise that may come from a sand mine and the, and the effluent of the sand itself. I don't know that I think that they should be that close to residential uses. That's just my opinion.
Jonas, I have one other question. The lady that spoke said there were eight mines in the area. So the map that you just were on, how close are they to?
And we actually created kind of a map showing those in the area, so this is not showing all eight. So this is not showing all eight because there are some to the south. So this is the area, what we consider the, the subject area we're looking at. So there's currently three active ones directly close. There are other ones further north in the area that we don't really feel, from a land use perspective, kind of reached the conversation of, you know, a sand mine in the general vicinity. So the yellow one up in the top left is the one we're looking at this evening. Um, that's pending, obviously. There's an active sand mine just to the east of it, um, at the corner of Ramshorn Road and US 264. To the south of that, the yellow, um, that was a sand mine that was initially denied by this board and the board of commissioners. And the applicant came back a year later and increased their setback requirements. You may remember that when the, there's a gentleman in opposition that had a RV parked to the south of it, but they kind of had the same conversations and met and gave and take a little bit, you know? And the operator there doubled the setback in that situation. The one to the left of that, um, this one is an active sand mine that was, it predates our zoning ordinance, so that was there before zoning was adopted in the county in 2003. We have no regulations over that one at all whatsoever. The red one there, um, that was also pre-zoning. That is no longer active. It's been released by the state, um, and is no longer in operation. And then to the east of that, um, that one is operated by ER Lewis. So that one is active as well. So that kind of gives an idea of what's in the area, active, pending, um, and then the one that has been released by the state. So those are the ones in the very general area that we kind of looked at during this conversation.
May I? So the cemetery appears to be squarely in, within the perimeter of this mine site. So how will people who are interested in going to visit the gravestones of their loved ones access that site? And what will the environment be when they get there?
So from, and there's nothing in our ordinance that addresses this. So one of staff's, when we first got this, before we even reviewed it with the applicant and he agreed to it later, was that that needs to be addressed. The only thing we can really do is just put it in our conditions and the applicant has agreed to it, to have a 10-foot easement from Ramshorn Road to that cemetery. Um, this is a, it's a private piece of property. It's, it's changed ownership several times to the point of where Mr. Tripp has an option on it. It's, it's not its own parcel, if that makes sense. So it's not like it's a parcel that they're required to provide an easement to. That would be voluntary. And whoever owns that property, Mr. Tripp or somebody else could go put in 100 house subdivision out there. It wouldn't come before this board, it wouldn't get before the commissioners. They would still probably have to put some kind of easement into that, um, cemetery, but with it being just part of this private property, like I said, it's changed hands. I'm not sure exactly where Mr. Tripp, that's part of what that's full site plan review, um, would entail if this is approved, to have that site plan approved, showing that easement that does provide that access. Um, so anybody, family or otherwise, could go out there. Mr. Tripp maybe can speak to what they may or may not do to stay away from it outside of the 50-foot rules they have, um, for actual excavation purposes. But we really don't have anything besides that condition that, you know, we put in that easement, and that has to be agreed to by the applicant. Uh, we don't have any teeth to that, outside of that. So if he didn't agree to it, we couldn't really hold him to that. In this situation, Mr. Bobby Tripp has said he's more than happy to do that. But otherwise, since it's part of this private property, we just don't really have much teeth to provide appearance or access otherwise outside of that agreement.
I have another question. So, uh, Mr. Tripp, I believe, commented, uh, he leaned kind of heavily on the idea that the sand mine was just phase one, and then there would be these 10 acre tracts. I don't see the connection between, the necessary connection between those two ideas?
So I think, look at them as two separate projects. I mean, as part of our present, that's why we didn't include it in our presentation. We've been told that that's kind of his long-term plan. Um, I wouldn't recommend that that's a, a, a part of the board's decision tonight. I think Mr. Tripp was just kind of show that, look, after this is dug, it's not just gonna be a hole in the ground. There's gonna be some 10 acre tracts, farm sites, and Pitt County doesn't have a whole lot of subdivisions like that. So my understanding is he just thinks that's a potential need, lakefront property in Pitt County. Again, that's a separate project. He had to rezone it back to the current RA zoning district and then go through that subdivision process for those 10 acre tracts. So it really has nothing to do with this project. Um, staff's recommendation was to kind of keep them separate since the conditional district is strictly for that sand mine itself. But that's my recommendation on how to view those two different projects.
So the mining isn't necessary for the possible tract project?
It, it could be subdivided now without the, the mine on it, if that answers your question.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. With the, with the number of existing, uh, sand mines that are out there right now, and somebody brought up a, a really, something that stuck with me as far as the property value. So has that come up with any of the, of the requests that have been approved before? And do we know anything about how, uh, these existing land mines or the proposed land mines, I mean, uh, sand mines would affect the property value of the, uh, of the existing area and even in the future?
Right.
With what Mr. Tripp is planning?
I'm not familiar with any study. If you'll remember, I think we've had some solar farms where they bring in experts for, you know, land appraisals and things of that. Jonas, you're not familiar, are you? Yeah, so to my knowledge, staff hasn't received anything with sand mines specifically as far as property values, so I'm not aware of anything.
I do have one more question. So I, I know in the past, we have received information about the lifespan of a mine, and forgive me if I've just missed it on this one. Is there a, do we know how long this mine would go on?
Do you mind if I ask the applicant to come answer that question?
I don't mind.
Mr. Tripp, do you mind? Just step up here.
So timeframe on this, of course, our goal is to get to the end to sell 10 acre tracts. That's the whole goal of this mine. And I, and I want to address this while, cause you ask a good question and, and without knowing the rest of it. We started this again, asking to dig this, only purpose of selling 10 acre tracts and homesteads around this lakefront area, okay? So it'd be low impact, it'd be low density. I mean, uh, you know, so instead of it being a high-density neighborhood in this area, we felt more comfortable with something low-density with 10 acre tracts. So as they mentioned earlier, there's nothing else in the county that offers a body of water that you can build on such as this unless, and just be frank with you, unless you want to spend a million dollars, you know? So this is, this is kind of a, um, a mindset we have. We, and asking as far as timeframe, we are gonna be aggressive getting it out to use it for these 10 acre tracts. So the gold here is the 10 acre tracts around the body of water, as much so as, or more so than it is the mining.
So, so is this more like a lead to an end, so to speak? Are you, are you saying that you're gonna, whatever you excavate from there, it's not going out here anywhere, but you're doing this for the purpose of the future proposal that you have, that even, hasn't even been suggested or approved yet?
Uh, yes, correct. We're creating the lake for the future project.
Right.
Okay? But the ma, but the material will be excavated and hauled offsite, because that site couldn't hold this much material, of course.
Right.
All right? But, and, and back to the cemetery, if I can touch on it just a minute. I wish we could see the, and can we show the long-term plan?
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
I have it pulled up and we heard it just in case it was discussed.
I think when you see the long-term plan, it'll make more sense where we're heading with it. And, uh, and, and maybe some of the neighbors have not seen that either.
When you say long-term, sir, how far is long-term?
We're hoping to be out of this mine. We, we want to be out of it in five years. That's what we want to be out of it. No more than five years.
So y'all should be able to see that, hopefully on your screen? Can you see that now? Okay, I'm gonna try to zoom in. Yeah, we're good. All right.
So if you, if you see, you can see the lighter color in the middle represents what'll be the body of water when we're finished with the mine, that we're having to get the mining permit due to the size of it. That would be the body of water. All these different shaded colors are 10-plus acre tracts that will be put in around it. And if you see these, uh, the black outline, the black section running down beside it, that represents the roads to access each one of these tracts of land. So where the cemetery is, right now, the cemetery really has enough access when it's, when it's, you know, when it's farmed, it's farmland all the way around this, around the cemetery now, the graveyard cemetery. So when we, when we complete it, you would go to lot? Yes. Lot, lot four. If you see where the end of that road runs, that shared drive for those two parcels of land would access you back to the cemetery, to the graveyard.
So is the only way to create a man-made lake to operate a sand mine?
We have to permit it for a sand mine. We can't dig the lake. We can only, we can only dig five acres for a site project. Once we exceed our five acres, we have to apply to, to the state for a sand mine permit. And we, and the, and of course, the regulations for the county is you have to get a rezoning to apply for the sand mine. And as has been mentioned several times before, this is zoned for 10 acre tracts, is zoned for R30 tracts. So, uh, we really felt, again, that this would be a good use for this tract of land in lieu of putting X amount of houses, like, you know, it could be 100 houses out there. But we felt like this would be a better use for land than cramming houses in, in this type setting, because it's more rural agriculture.
And that was the reason, again, for what I heard earlier. We've got an 85 acre plot, but we're just gonna mine 25 acres.
That's it. If we were in the, if we were thinking mining only, uh, we'd be up here explaining to you how we're gonna mine 50-plus acres or 80, hey, or 80 if we could get it, you know? So that is not the intent. And distance from residential, if you go back to your other map, you'll see that buffer, it, it represents, that buffer is a, that green area, that represents a 100-foot buffer plus. So that gives you an idea from residence, I mean, from areas around it. And we've got sand mines that operate, uh, you know, as, I mean, as close or closer to some of these areas than what this one does. And, uh, and I'm sure the county will vouch for it. We don't have any noise that creates a problem with neighbors in the areas that we're operating in, that we're getting reported to the county for.
So right now, is there, was there something in the, the, uh, in the recommendation that you guys prepared for us that allows for, uh, access to the, to the, uh, site where the graveyard is currently before the, the, uh, home sites gets laid out in the future? Is there something that would give them access to that while all of this, uh, sand mining is going on? Where they, the family, they have, you know, family members out there, where they still have access?
So that easement would run with it for life after the cemetery? That 10-foot access that we're requesting and putting as a condition that Mr. Tripp has agreed to? Yes, sir.
I'm curious about types of mining, sand mining operations. This is, it sounds like not as industrial as some operations are.
This is non-blasting. This has no de-watering, so the water never leaves the site, which is typical for a sand mine. A lot of times, you want to get the water offsite so you can keep, go as deep as you can. This pit right here will be dug without pumping any water anywhere. And again, it is not our primary focus. It is, our primary focus is to create a body of water to sell 10 acre tracts around.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Tripp.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board? Discussion? Yes, sir. I will take your comment.
I have one question I'd like to ask. You're talking about a sign, a sand mine for five years, operational from 7:00 to 5:30. My question, how many trucks a day will come down in front of my house for the next five years? On, on average day, how many loads of sand will come in front of my house? Because I'm very concerned about the traffic on a two-lane highway. We have a lot of farm equipment during the summer going by, and I mean, I'm, I'm very concerned over the traffic. Thank you.
Mr. Singla, you've already, since we've closed and you've had an opportunity to speak, I don't, I don't want to open public comment again. I'll entertain a motion from the board if there's no more discussion.
Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the recommendation of the staff and that we do that because this proposed rezoning request is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2045 comprehensive land use plan and, um, therefore, I just move that we do grant approval.
There's a motion on the table. Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, like, please raise your hand. All those in favor. And those opposed, please raise your hand. Motion failed.
And if we could, Chairman, um, you should have a worksheet in the page.
One of the, the caveat.
Since we're not going with staff's recommendation, if the board can look at that worksheet as far as the verbiage for the motion, um, otherwise, let me see what page it's on, sorry. Page 48. It may assist, um, a potential second motion.
I move to recommend denial of the proposed rezoning request by Bobby Tripp and find that it is not consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2024 comprehensive land plan and is not reasonable because of the requests for the following reasons by the board. Will not, will have adverse impact on the surrounding properties and does not protect significant natural features of ecological-sensitive areas.
All right. A motion, new motion, a second? There's a second. All those in favor, will you please raise your hand? And opposed? Motion passes.
All right, thank you. And as a reminder to the board and the public here tonight, this will go before the, uh, Pitt County Board of Commissioners at their meeting on November 17th. And if you're within 500 feet and got a notice for this meeting, you will be given a second notice for that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We have along, Mr. Gooby, amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Gooby is not with us tonight, so I'll be handling that, uh, next request. Next request is a text amendment to the Pitt County zoning ordinance. Uh, on October 6th, just last week, uh, the, uh, North Carolina General Assembly, uh, passed House Bill, uh, 926, and it became law. Uh, they amended through that legislation, North Carolina General Statute 160D-601, which, uh, states that if a rezoning request, for example, is denied by, uh, the board of commissioners, that the applicant would have to wait one year before bringing that item back to be reconsidered. So with the amendment, uh, by the legislation, uh, they have taken that clause out. That one-year wait period has been lifted. Uh, so we therefore, in order to be in compliance with state laws, need to amend our zoning ordinance to reflect the state, uh, laws. Therefore, we are recommending to amend Section 14-J, uh, of our zoning ordinance to remove that clause of that one-year wait period, uh, for any action taken. that clause of that one-year wait period for any action taken to deny a project. Actually, with the, with the wait period, with the legislation being passed, we can no longer legally have a wait period. So if, if someone brought a rezoning request that was denied, currently, they would have had to have waited one year before presenting another plan similar to that original plan. Now, with the amendments by the state, if a rezoning request was to be denied, they could turn around the following month and resubmit the plan, hopefully addressing some of the concerns as to why it was denied in the first place, to seek approval. It's my understanding that this legislation was passed by the General Assembly in an effort to create more affordable housing scenarios. So if a developer brought a plan to a board, they denied it, that developer could, would not have to wait another year to address the concerns that were brought up, but could resubmit the plan and speed up that development process to satisfy the affordable housing, or shortage of affordable housing. So, our recommendation is to remove the language to comply with state law from our zoning ordinance. The schedule for this is tonight. We're presenting to the planning board, and we'll take this along with the previous item to the Board of Commissioners on November 17th, to remove that language.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt that, the recommendation of our planning.
And if I could get that, I was getting ready to say, our recommended motion is that it's consistent with the land use plan to comply with state law, and that it's in the public's best interest because of state law.
And it is all of that, Mr. Chair. That's part of my motion.
I second that.
All right. Motion on the table, all those in favor?
Actually, before, before we get to the motion and all, we need to have a public hearing.
Okay.
Because it is an amendment to the ordinance, so you can open and close the public hearing if no one's here.
I'll open it for public comments. Okay. Here, no, now I'll close it.
Now we can accept the motion.
Yes, yes. Please come up. State your name again, and your address.
It's Ann Brierley. I'm a little confused about the amendment, and I know we have to comply with state law, for y'all to vote on that, but it was my understanding that, I want to be sure I understand what y'all are voting for, that an applicant for this type of thing that we've talked about tonight, that our legislature has taken out, you have to wait the one year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that is what y'all are voting on? So an applicant could come right back in 30 days, 60 days, and come back in, and we could all do this again, if that one year that our legislature said that y'all almost have to do that to be legally compliant. Is that correct?
That's true, but this is not the only done thing that this legislature has done. But it's the law.
Okay. Now, I'm a little bit confused too, because you voted on one thing, and then we turned around and you voted on something else as far as the applicant.
Well, what difference does it make if they bring it back a day later, or a year later, really? What difference does it make? I mean, what, what is the value of waiting a year from the standpoint of our economy?
Oh, I see what you're saying, Sonny, I do. I understand what you're saying on that. I guess it's to see if we can obtain more data that would either support the position or deny the position. I don't know, I'm not in the legislature. I don't know that. That's just my opinion. It would just be giving an opportunity for someone to come back and submit more information, either for something or against something. Thank you. Thank you. I was just wanting some clarification. Thank you.
So, to try to shed a little insight, I think, I think the idea is, if an applicant was denied for whatever reason, and turned around and submitted the exact same plan, they're probably gonna get the same result. So I think the, the one-year period just delayed the applicant's ability to address the concerns as to why it was denied, so they could bring it back and seek approval in a shorter time period, is my understanding.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, camp on what he just said. I mean, sometimes the plan is not, we vote it down because it's not perfect, and the developer will come back and make it perfect, and he shouldn't, or she shouldn't have to wait a year to present it again. That's my opinion. So, anyway.
And again, staff is recommending this because it is now state law, as it has been voted in by our legislator, legislature.
Okay.
Absolutely.
The way you look at it, it would be de-stable if we could reapply, because it's gotta wait for the county commissioners on November 17th to make a decision.
Correct.
All right. Do we need to redo that motion?
Yes, please, just for the record.
Okay.
I'll put our recommendation on the screen.
Yes, sir. I, I move that the planning board adopt the recommendation of the planning staff, and, and on the grounds that this is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2045 land use, comprehensive land use plan, because it will allow the planning staff to continue to promote an effective jurisdiction-wide land use regulatory program that is consistent with applicable state law and regulation. And we find that the proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest, because it is intended for consistency with state law and regulation. And that is my motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? No. Thanks. All right. Informational items.
All right. Great job with that motion, by the way, Mr. McGowan. Informational items, just wanted to cover our work program for this, this year, was developed back in July. However, this is the first time since July we've had an opportunity to meet, so wanted to include our planning department's work program in your agenda packet. That covers all the tasks that our department intends to perform this fiscal year, from '25 to '26. Just to hit a couple of highlights, we have already begun the implementation of our EPNL permitting software. We intend to launch the planning department's side of that in November. That will allow developers to submit plans, whether it's rezoning requests, subdivision plans, stormwater plans, soil erosion plans, electronically online through our permitting system. So we're excited about that. We just had a meeting today with the development community to receive feedback and input on that software, to ensure we have a smooth transition, hopefully next month in November with that. So, looking forward to that. Also, we have, you may have heard, we have implemented a forerunner software. This software allows the general public to get information regarding floodplain. It is a user-friendly software, that if you clicked on a parcel, you could find the history of that parcel regarding flooding. You could find any elevation certificates or information that we've, permits that we've issued for any structures on that property. So we feel like it's very helpful and beneficial. It will also help the county with its community rating system, that is administered by FEMA. They come and audit us to ensure we are complying, so any correspondence we have with any citizen will be entered into this software, and it will be tied to the parcel, and we can run a report as to our communication when we're audited for that. So we're super excited about that. It will make that audit process a little easier. Also, we are still, believe it or not, dealing with the recovery from Hurricane Florence. We are in the process, very shortly, we'll have that program closed out. We have bought out the homes that we intended to buy, we have demolished them, and made sure all improvements were removed, such as septic tank wells, driveways, that sort of thing. So, we are wrapping that up and hope to have that closed out by the end of this year. Also, I am serving on the Tar River Flood Resiliency Blueprint Committee. This is in conjunction with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. We're looking at the resiliency of the Tar-Pamlico River Basin as a whole. It involves community leaders from all across the Tar-Pamlico Basin, and hopefully, we will have good data to support that program here this year. So, keep on the lookout for more, more information regarding that program. Moving on to other items included in your informational items, we've had several rezoning requests that came before you and has since gone to the commissioners for approval or denial, and that information and the action that the commissioners took is included in your packet. I will say, just to hit a couple of highlights, the mega site that you guys heard at your last meeting in July, the commissioners did recommend approval of that, so that project is moving forward. Also, the Calvin Overcash rezoning request that you heard along with the mega site, that was approved by the commissioners as well, as well as HSP investments. That one, that was, if you'll remember, that was the mini storage for Sawyer's property. They requested that we delay going to the Board of Commissioners to give them an opportunity to speak with the property owners. So they are still in the process of communicating with the adjacent property owners to try to reach a compromise before taking that to the commissioners. Hexagon, that was a solar farm, if you'll remember, down in Grifton. That item did go before the commissioners and was approved, and, as well as the text amendment for Art Consulting Group, that allowed that conservation buffer around rezoning requests. Also, you have some information in there, in your packet, regarding the Neuse River Hazard Mitigation Plan update. That, that item did get approved by the commissioners to update our hazard mitigation plan, so we've submitted that to the state, and fortunately, we are in compliance. Should a natural disaster occur, we should receive or be eligible for federal funding in those events. Hopefully, we don't need it. The Pitt County Flood Print Report item is in your agenda. You can read more about that, as well as your July, August, and September monthly reports for the planning department. As always, you can find all of this information to the general public on our planning website, which is undergoing a change right now to seek compliance for ADA compliance for the website. So we're in a transition period, but the information is still out there. Did want to touch, some of y'all may have heard on the news that Pitt County is in the process of adopting its, or developing its strategic plan for the county. There's currently a survey online that you can access through Pitt County's website. I would encourage y'all, if y'all have not done so, to visit the website, the county's website, and take that survey. The strategic plan is designed to develop a roadmap, if you will, of, to align all county departments, employees, and community partners around a shared vision and common goal of where we're headed here in Pitt County. So, it's got a lot of good questions that you can comment on, share your opinions on, on the direction you see the county going in the future. So, if you haven't had an opportunity, I would encourage you to go on the website and complete that survey. They have held several public input sessions around the county last week. However, all of those have been held. There is still a virtual meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at 6:30 PM. And if you, anyone's interested that's listening, or if any of y'all are interested, you can contact our county manager's department to get a link to that, that virtual input session. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, unless y'all have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other business for the evening? Here, no, now I'll take a motion.
I have a motion to adjourn.
All right. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.